We'd like to call to order the August 14th meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call rule?
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Council members Weaver?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Hocker?
Here.
Very good. Would you all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not aware of any additions or changes to the agenda.
With approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next up is citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. If we have anyone in the chamber who wishes to address us, please come to the podium. In the meantime, Pete will check and see if there's anyone online.
For those participating online, you can use the raise hand function in your Zoom screen. At the bottom of that screen, you'll see a set of emojis. If you press the reaction emoji, window will pop up and you can select raise hand.
While Pete does that, I'll just remind everyone here that Clive supports the pillars of character counts. So we endeavor at all times to promote and model those principles. That is of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. So in everything we do, we expect everyone in the chamber to follow those principles. So Pete, do we have anyone?
No, Your Honor.
Very good. Before we move on to the rest of the agenda, I wanted to take a moment and honor one of our own. Ted Weaver celebrates 15 years of service to the city. And that's a remarkable achievement.
Who knew?
He's done a great deal of very, very hard work on MPO, Personnel Committee, and others. So we greatly appreciate that work. And so we have a certificate of appreciation for those years of service and a bonus in your Clive account, store account. So, and I think Pete wanted to get a photo to commemorate the occasion. But he wants us to go from outside our new secure bulletproof area to the front. So we hope that'll be safe.
All right.
I had no idea. August 10.
How's the client like?
Still do it in front.
Now we're moving to consent. Requires resolution.
With approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent. Further discussion?
Lightning fast down there.
It was good. I like it.
Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That's passed by a vote of...
My extend get in.
Technical error of the room, Mayor. By a vote of five to zero. Very good. Next we'll move to the action items. I have Amanda up to tell us about the public hearing. Matthew, did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor. It's published in the Des Moines Register on July 28, 2025.
Thank you, Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. An honor to be your first action item in the new chambers. Tonight we do have the public hearing before us that will bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with House File 652. That relates to the variance standards for counties and cities. It created a new section that relates just to what's called dimensional or area variances. Basically, anything in the ordinance that has a number component, minimum square footage, number of parking spaces, how many foot of setback, those sorts of standards would be considered dimensional or area-related. And so what this state law does is it's created a new section for those sorts of variances, distinguishing those separately from use-related variances. And it has applied a new standard of practical difficulties rather than undue hardship. So basically, it's just taken the bar a little bit lower for those dimensional-type variances. The unnecessary or undue hardship, you really had to prove that you had no use of the property without that, which isn't a standard that I think pretty much any city had strictly held to. But there was a 2021 Iowa Supreme Court case. And through that process, the courts had upheld the unnecessary hardship standard, but then also had kind of nudged the legislature that there might be a more appropriate standard for certain types of variances. The legislature heard that and then they passed this House File 652 in the last session. So staff has presented this to Planning and Zoning Commission. It's had conversations with Board of Adjustment. Planning and zoning does recommend approval of the ordinance as it's presented here. We've taken what's largely our current standards and subbed in practical difficulties instead of undue hardship for those area-dimensional variances. So it's not going to be a huge change for our Board of Adjustment, but there will be some new training and stuff we go through with them on that as well. So with that, I would welcome any questions you may have.
Questions for Amanda.
Amanda, is this one that we waive and just pass it since it's coming down from the legislator? Or do we just?
We don't currently have any cases pending, so there's not a rush on this one. We won't be having a meeting this month for Board of Adjustment. So our next meeting won't be till the middle of September. So I don't think there's any need to waive.
Fair enough.
Move that ordinance number one...
Nope, nope.
Close public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? The public hearing is closed.
Move that ordinance number 1165, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Motion and second on the first reading. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that first reading passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Amanda. Pete Stormwater.
Thank you, Your Honor. So at your previous meeting, the council had a chance to discuss proposed amendments to the Clive post-construction stormwater ordinance. This is a manual that exists so that the city can comply with all of the federal and state requirements that we face, but also so that we can make sure that we are building infrastructure that will perform for decades and decades to come for the city of Clive, while we're in conditions where weather keeps changing. So during that presentation, there were two major policy changes that we were proposing. One had to do with the shape of the storms. So that's moving from what had been a model that dated back a number of decades to the six-hour temporal model, which more accurately maps to the types of storms that we're seeing here in the Midwest today. The second primary policy change concerned a future conditions modifier, which would add another .25 when we're talking about the types of flows that we need to design for. That is because both in observed data today and in modeling that we've done for Walnut Creek, we know that there are bigger and more intense storms coming, which means the infrastructure we build, if we want it to perform in the future, needs to be sized, designed in a way to accommodate those types of bigger storms. The direction from council was, after that discussion, was to reach out to a number of stakeholders to get their response to the proposed changes. We did reach out to the Des Moines Home Builders Association and they were very appreciative that we did. The conversation has been very good thus far, though I wouldn't say that it's over. There's, this gets very technical when we're in the manual. And so, but I think at this point, we still will have some work to do with engineers, talking to engineers, to come up with some clarifying language. But the primary, in the manual, but the primary question or critique that the Home Builders Association had was about that future conditions modifier. At this point, they've raised questions about what that will mean for the size of detention in particular. This is a point that was very salient during the whole debate about SF 455, the state legislation that now limits in some ways how cities can manage stormwater. The thing to note about size of detention is that it's going to be variable from site to site. It's going to be variable from sort of plan to plan, depending on how a developer would like to address their stormwater requirements and also whether we're talking about a pure greenfield development or redevelopment. The two policy items, though, that we identified, they work in concert together with the more accurate shape of the storm with the temporal model that we're proposing. That, in many circumstances, will have an effect of decreasing the required size of detention, while then the future conditions modifier will have an effect of potentially increasing the size of that detention. But none of it to the point where we would be substantially different from the kind of sizing that we're doing in Clive today. Does that make sense? So that was sort of the big takeaway, that yeah, there are these two levers and both of them are backed up by good science and good data. The net effect is, for most examples, slightly smaller detention or about the same size detention that we would see under the current rules we have. We do have a representative from the developer community, the Home Builders Association with Vista. And he and I have had a chance to touch base. And we know that we're going to be getting together in the next couple of weeks to keep working on some clarifying language. But tonight, the staff would recommend approval of the amended manual, excuse me, with the note that we will continue to clarify any parts of that manual that are confusing today. But the underlying policy, those two primary policy changes, would move forward as part of our manual. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Questions for Pete.
Pete, a couple of questions, but more of a comment. I appreciate it, you know, I know I had requested kind of one of them that requested that HBA contact and they're very appreciative. I've heard it as well from them, talked to Dan about it. Let's just keep that going, right? And I think if we're at the table often with them, that solves a lot of the problems of the perceptions, perhaps. So well done there. And they were very complimentary of you and the discussions they had with them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Mike. Communication's the key on this. And you know, with the ways we work with our investment partners, I think having that outreach and soliciting, you know, their thoughts on this as well. We can craft better ordinances and better legislation with good input and, you know, from the experts in Vista and others are those experts. Did we hear from any other of our friends in the development community as well?
I know Dan circulated our draft manual to many of the folks in the Developers Council and Vista was one for sure and some other big home builders that have been active in Clive and in the metro. So I think it's definitely getting around. With you dealing with a very technical document like this, it's hard for a layperson like me to see all of its dimensions. So the next meetings that we set up, we'll want to make sure that we have our water resources engineer in the room too. Ray actually did already provide some sort of initial thoughts and some of the recommendations that are questions that were raised from the Home Builders Association really called out some places where we can get more clear language. But I don't want to say that it's all just now about clarifying language. There are still some pertinent policy questions here where there's difference, I think, among the groups. Really those two big ones that I described.
Further questions?
I'm with the resolution, approving amended Clive post-construction stormwater management manual.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Amanda, you're back.
Thank you again. Tonight we have before us the site plan and preliminary plat for Danner Distillery. While Matthew pulls that up, and he can go ahead and advance to the first slide on there. We do have Danner's team with us here tonight. They'll be available to answer questions. But Joseph Danner is the owner of Danner Distillery LLC. He did start Danner Distillery here in Clive 12 or 13 years ago and he's been slowly growing his business. So he is ready now to move on to a larger, oh, sorry, back one, to a larger... You were not at the beginning at all. Back like eight, maybe? There we go. Sorry. So he is ready to build a larger facility and then also is excited about the opportunity to expand the services, primarily in relation to having customers be able to come on site. So this proposal does include, as we've talked about before, that tasting room, outdoor patio oriented toward the Green Belt, and then retail sales as well that could be direct to the public. Those are a couple of features that Danner Distillery does not currently offer at their University Boulevard location in the strip center over there. So this is the site location. You can see it's across the street from the tank farm. That property's been vacant for 20 or so years. So that's just a little context setting for you on the site. Go ahead to the next one. So here we have the overall layout. To the right of the screen is 86th Street. So you can see there is, it's a very large building for that area, 20,000-plus square feet. Primarily, it is kind of a warehouse finish on the interior of it. But the building will be pulled up towards 86th Street, which is definitely something we're excited about seeing. Then there is some landscaping and pulling in the Edenstone wall features along 86th Street as well in front of the parking area. But what you're really seeing here, if we advance to the next slide, is the grade changes. Anywhere that's green, the grade is positive increase or about the same in a few instances. Anywhere that's red, it's being dug out, getting a little bit lower. So you can see along 86th Street in front of the building, you can't read the numbers here, but that finished floor elevation is approximately five and a half feet higher than the sidewalk elevation. So the elevations at 86th Streets and then the driveway entrance elevations off that current city drive alley, those are fixed points that we can't change because of the existing infrastructure. So as we're grappling with the floodplain and floodway that's on the property here, we had to get the finished floor elevation for this or any other development on the property to one foot above that 100-year flood elevation. On the Danner property or development proposal, we're actually one foot above the 500-year elevation. There's not a big difference there in what that elevation is. But that's just a little bit of added protection with the nature of the distillery operations potentially being higher hazard. Though they are not doing kind of the initial intensive distillation from grain, this is more finishing distilling. So you can see here, there are a couple stormwater facilities being constructed in those red areas. That's why they're lower than the other portions of the site. So those will be bio-retention facilities. There is a discharge point onto the city property just at the southwest corner of the site. So assuming council's amenable with that as part of the plan here, we will be setting public hearing for granting that permanent easement. Additionally, there will need to be permanent easement and agreements granted with the trail connection that's shown off the west side there. So we'll bring those items back to you, assuming there were no changes to the site plan that would modify those locations based on tonight's conversation. And then you can also see on the sheets, it might show better on the next one too, Matthew, if you want to advance. There is coming across the site that large sanitary trunk sewer that is not able to be abandoned at this time. There is possibility for the city to abandon that infrastructure, potentially with the new WRA main that will go in. But for now, that sanitary sewer will remain in place and continue to operate. And then let's go to the next one.
Can we get a little clarification on that? I understand it's a bigger project than just, you know, getting rid of the main, right? What is the thought, though? You know, we do know WRA is coming down with that large trunk. That is going to happen in the next, we talked about it yesterday or the day before, next, what, two years or something? How do we go back in there and remove that? Or, and who's going to remove it, right?
Yes.
I don't suspect Joseph should have to do that or?
Correct. So we won't actually have to remove the infrastructure that's in the grounds, assuming we're able to connect to the WRA sewer like we're currently thinking. That would be in the next two to three years. It's a phased project, so we're not sure exactly when they'll get to that section. But at that time, you'd connect to it and I think it's the type of pipe they just fill with like the flowable concrete, I think is the standard for abandoning. Looking for Jeff to nod. Is that what we do?
Yeah. If we're able to figure out a solution with the WRA at this point, it is looking a little ominous on being able to eliminate the need for this particular pipe. This particular pipe is a City of Clive trunk sewer. So it's picking up lots of flow from the western part of our city and routing it down to a collection point. The new WRA sewer, we have been discussing with them, the ability to upsize their proposed sewer so that it could accommodate our particular flows. That is in the realm of possibility from an engineering standpoint in terms of grades and lay of land, things of that nature. The WRA is still kind of working through some questions and concerns from a pure capacity and risk management perspective. They have some concerns that if they are to accept this relatively large Clive flow into their pipe, even if it's a larger pipe, that there may be some unintended consequences to folks upstream of this area. So we are still having those discussions. I'm not holding my breath that we'll be able to get this worked out, which is why this particular site plan has gone through its process with the worst-case scenario in mind, which is the pipe has to stay and the development simply has to work around it.
Thank you.
Doug? Any other questions on that?
Any questions for Amanda?
Amanda, can you give us a view of what it will look like on 86th Street?
Yes. Matthew, if you want to go forward one to start. So this kind of aerial rendering view shows the shape of the building. The part on the right of the screen, that half, shows you what's going to be facing toward 86th Street. I wanted to include this, though, just so you could better understand the shape and kind of that 3D rendering of the building. If you go forward one slide. Here's the elevation that's actually going to face and be most close to 86th Street. It is the southern part that's toward the left of your screen is set back a little bit from the front of the building there. You can kind of see that breakpoint with the stucco ephes wall up above. But you can see that the front is designed in like a historic brick warehouse style, which is fitting for the proposed use also being primarily warehouse in this portion of it and manufacturing. But you can see they have done the full brick. There are accents for the decorative turned portions of the brick there in the quinions? Coins? Thank you. On the corners as well as incorporating in the windows. They did break those up to make them feel a little more human scale as well as bringing the awnings down. This isn't our typical storefront expectation that we were trying to establish. However, with that grade change, that is going to be really challenging to actually get that storefront relationship with the street and the public sidewalk there. And we are about five and a half feet above the sidewalk. That's how tall I am. So the floor will be here if I was walking next to the building. So it is up a ways, definitely, for the building portion. And then the site kind of slopes back down to the parking lot area. But again, that's going to be the, that finished floor elevation is basically set by the floodplain regulations and then the fixed elevations that are existing for the street and infrastructure that are there. So then if we go to the next one, this would be the opposite elevation, the one that is towards the Green Belt. Some of the material choices here are very intentional by the applicant to create that design aesthetic. They're kind of going for an industrial-type feel in their tasting room area, the part that's open to the public. So they have those shadow wall metal panels on the lower portion where people are actually sitting. There'd be an overhang and some fencing around that, railing around that as well as an alcohol service area. And then there is another type of metal panel above that that will be more visible to like the public, people who are not immediately on the site. That's the style wall panel. It's a concealed fastener. So that metal panel would meet the standards that are in the development standards manual as a primary material, but is not a primary material that the 86th Street Design Guidelines would permit on the building. The way those guidelines are structured today, any sort of metal paneling would have to be an accent material, which is generally capped at about 15% of the elevation area. In this case, obviously, it is the majority of the elevation on some of these sides would be the metal panels. The applicant did include a letter that was in your packet as well requesting your guys' consideration on this topic. So they've really tried to maximize the brick aesthetic in those most public spaces. And then again, if we advance one more slide, you can see the north elevation and on the south elevation, they've wrapped the brick to come back where basically the building that exists to the north is in line with where the brick ends. So the metal panel as it exists today will be largely screened. However, I do want to remind everyone, this is a redevelopment area. The city's goal is that there would be redevelopment on those properties to the north. So we would expect in the future those views would change and we can't predict exactly what that relationship with the buildings is going to be in the future. Today, when this would be built, that's not going to be very visible from 86th Street or the properties immediately around it. Of course, the south elevation is going to be very visible to people who are on the property. That is what faces in toward the parking area. With the nature of the distillery-type use, that's also where the loading dock-type services are located as well. So there is definitely a decision point to be made of if we are amenable to the architectural metal panels that are, would be allowed in other commercial districts in the city, to be allowed in the 86th Street Guidelines. That could be more narrowly tailored. This is the TC4 district. So staff's intent would be if you all are amenable to this, we would bring back a recommended change to the 86th Street Guidelines to really explain where and when that metal paneling could be an appropriate material substitute for brick. If you're not amenable to it, then of course, staff's recommendation would be we require different material to be used, which in this case is essentially going to be brick with, under the 86th Street Guidelines. The exposed fastener panels, though, are used on that north elevation as well. So that is a material that we currently would not approve on any other commercial district as a primary material on the main building. So it is largely a cost decision, but I would let the applicant...
Can you lay out the parameters of the boundaries of the TC4 district?
Yeah, so largely the TC4 district is going to pick up the Swanson Depot Shopping Center that has like Miss Kitty's Salon Zaza, that area. It's going to come down to 86th Street and University's intersection there and pick up Mr. Car Wash, the Old Toys R Us Shopping Center area. And then I believe it also includes Discount Tire, just on the other side of the 86th Street there. And then I think it picks up the Marzetti Properties and Bruegger's Bagels. That's basically the extent of the TC4 district. And that is the entertainment district. So I think we could craft fairly specific, you know, it's a larger format. Those commercial entertainment uses are going to kind of by nature have a larger footprint for floor area. Those are going to be things like bowling alleys, stuff of that nature that's larger for physical entertainment of patrons. So I think we could tailor, if you all were amenable to some level of the architecture metal paneling, we could tailor it to specifically the TC4 district. Though that would be a pretty significant change in the 86th Street standards today. The other things that have redeveloped have been in compliance with the brick standards.
Could, could we not do both though? Could we, I mean, not have to change the entire standards yet to prove this one, right? Um, without then going and changing everything right away. Let's just pause and take a look at how many others would ask for this, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It'd be more about, um, kind of setting that expectation for precedent of this was okay because of these reasons. Um, but if council's not really concerned about that, we don't have to bring back any changes.
I mean, the precedent's bigger to me, right? It's this property i- is somewhat the exception.
Yes.
Um, because the property is an exception and we found somebody that's willing to develop it. You redeveloped as the, the depot area. I'm not so.
Right.
Probably giving in that one, right? Where it's, it's an easily, uh, redeveloped and it's years off, right?
Yes.
So to do it today, I'm not sure I'm interested in changing the entire standards, but yet waiving it for this one at this point. Now, it doesn't mean we don't have to work on it. Doug made it very clear yesterday though, that, uh, he doesn't want any new projects. And so this one would be a new project to redesign that entire standard. So maybe we leave that one alone and do a waiver on this one.
That is definitely, um, a perfectly acceptable approach. I was more envisioning a paragraph being added than a whole rewrite.
You said it was an extensive rewrite and I thought, oof, wow.
Yeah.
You know?
Amanda, any concerns from staff on traffic or traffic flows specifically with larger trucks getting in and out? And there, that impact on associate business around the neighborhood?
Matthew, if you could go back to slide three, that shows us the overall layout, or this works too, the landscape one will work. Um, you can see those, uh, current access points on eighty-sixth street are being closed, um, which is consistent with our design guidelines in the area. Um, so the accesses are being relocated to along that private driveway alley space that's currently owned by the city. Um, that, they are large access points, um, though that is specifically to accommodate the truck traffic. Um, the typical number of trucks they're getting, it's not, you know, it's not like it's Hy-Vee Distribution Center or something. They're getting a couple trucks a week, um, right, Joe? Couple a week?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay, couple a week, um, sorry, I wanted to double check there. Um, and then those are typically not going to be during their, uh, like, public hours. Um, they're, they'll be able to control to some extent their trucking and then when they're open. Um, obviously they're not going to want to be serving customers while they're also at the busiest point, taking their deliveries or sending stuff out. Um, so that's a lot that they can control. Um, it will be a little awkward coming in from eighty-sixth street, you'd have to cross over the, the, um, entry points there. But that's really only for people who would be walking coming from eighty-sixth street. I would expect more people are either of course going to be using the parking lot or coming from the trail connection. Um, which comes off the west and you can see does come right into that public entrance area. Um, so coming through that way, you would never have to enter the parking lot.
Any other concerns from staff on lighting plans and stormwater mitigation efforts?
Um, we do have, uh, to bring back to you, um, the final agreement for the floodplain stormwater management in lieu, uh, for this project. Um, now that we've adopted that amendment tonight to the manual, we can do that at a future meeting. Um, but this is, uh, consistent with that. Uh, we don't have any additional concerns at the moment, um, that I know of related to the stormwater management. It's always a challenge with our floodplain areas and floodway, um, that's why we have this new policy, so.
Lighting?
Lighting, um, no, it's, it's, uh, in compliance with our, um, photometric guidelines. There is going to be some decorative streetlights installed along eighty-sixth street, um, two additional ones installed there as part of the project.
Is there a sidewalk in front of that? I'm, I'm trying to.
Yes, yep, there will be sidewalk, there is today, um, and it will be improved to the eighty-sixth street standards.
Thank you.
Matthew, can you go back to the front elevation?
Slide eight.
Is there any signage on this?
Um, so right now the signage isn't designed yet for the property specifically. Uh, it's what they've shown here, you might be able to see it if you go back one.
There's a paddle or a pet, whatever.
Yeah, you can't really see it on there, um, but they've got, just showing, um, kind of your historic marquee sign that comes out. Um, would be, uh, perpendicular to the building wall. That's not a style that is currently allowed in our sign ordinance. Um, but as we got further down the line of discussion, if they wanted to pursue that, um, that's something we could bring back council's consideration as an amendment. Um, they're not inherently an objectionable type of sign. We just haven't really had a lot of that style of development in the city. Cause that's very much, um, oriented more toward pedestrian and cyclist type traffic than vehicles. Just with the size of the sign typically and how you have to read it.
Okay, and did staff have it, have any other recommendations or requests on the front elevation as far as to try to spruce it up? Canopies or anything to make it any more decorative or?
Um, they did do quite a bit of changes. We have the awnings and those decorative brick features, there is landscaping in front. Um, and again, the Edenstone wall is being pulled in. Uh, so there's been, I think, some good effort on the part of the design team. Um, decorative lighting that they've added to the building, uh, but this is currently their proposed.
Well, excuse me, uh, I, I'm in agreement with Mike. I mean, this, this parcel has been problematic for a couple of decades really. I mean, back to when it was Burger King and the sign there and, and just all kinds of issues that we've had with this location. So the fact that we've got a willing, um, you know, owner here that wants to put in a, a good business, I, you know, I'm, I'm fully in support of that. And I think you've done a nice job in making it look good, so.
Other comments or questions for Amanda? I just hope these new chambers are recording when Ted said he was in agreement with me.
It's a rare occurrence.
Anything else? What we're looking for is approval of site plan and.
Approval?
Second. Motion second to approve the site plan and the preliminary plat, further discussion. Seeing none with council please vote and with clerk please post that vote. That passes by a vote of five zero, good luck. Correspondents, we have a Bravo budget update. Anything you want to add to that? Very good, we'll move into reports and we'll start with you, Pete.
Thank you, your honor. So, starting August twentieth, the self-reporting for our special census will begin. The portal will open and then the first mailing will land in mailboxes for households in that area on August twenty-first. We are aggressively promoting both participation in the census and opportunities for people to work for the census. Uh, it's a bit of an uphill battle, uh, just because of the timing we were forced into by circumstances beyond our control. Uh, but we'll get there and we'll get a good census completed. I want to compliment my colleague, uh, Molly Elder, our communication specialist. She has been tapping all of the other communications teams around the metro that have already completed special censuses this year. Just to get some of their best practices so that we can apply them here in Clive. I had a good meeting with, uh, the Water Resources Best Uses Practice, Best Uses Committee from Central Iowa Water Works earlier this week. We're at the preliminary stage of pursuing grants that would, for willing communities, potentially provide some funding, direction, best practices on managing peaks and watering right without waste. So we look forward to those ongoing conversations and then really bringing some of Clive's unique experience to bear because we did get the data. We do know sort of what did and didn't, uh, work as well with, when we were going into the different phases of the, uh, water use restrictions. So more to come on that front. This morning I was with the Iowa League of Cities downtown and representatives of their Legislative Policy Committee to talk about what's on the horizon for this coming legislative session. Lots of really good stuff to share, I'm really impressed with how well the league staff is preparing for this upcoming session and really incorporating feedback from many different partners, uh, throughout the state. Uh, they have already been proactively reaching out to leadership in the senate and the house caucuses. Uh, the, on the GOP side and, and that's I think a mark of just building trust, growing confidence in that the league and it's who it represents are going to come to the, to table with, on these important legislative discussions with good ideas and a good heart. Finally, tonight we had our SQR program, uh, sort of kickoff with the webinar for participating families. At this point, we have sixty that have already paid between the standard program and then the, uh, special program that was set up for the Angel Park neighborhood. We still will have the rest of this month, we're not going to get started, uh, until very end of August, first part of September. With conditions like this, our, we're comfortable with our contractor potentially starting a little earlier. One tactic we're going to use if we are still looking to fill out our numbers. It will, uh, be using the signs like we used in the first year of the program where we do an SQR. And while you could still see that compost, stick a sign out there so people walking by see it and can get some information about the program. And if they've got space and the interest, we'll get them signed up and we'll get it done in September. That's all I have, your honor.
Thanks, any, any questions for Pete?
Bree?
Nothing to report.
Ted? Okay, Icon Water Trails, um, obviously a new fiscal year just started. Um, happy to report that for the upcoming fiscal year, both the, um, operations and capital funds are fully funded through twenty twenty-six, even if no new revenue comes in. So that's very positive, the, the finances of Icon are, are in good shape. Um, obviously there are some big major projects and expenditures coming up over the upcoming years. And so, um, there's plenty of fundraising that still continues, but, um, for this next fiscal year, we're, we're in very good shape. Uh, multiple projects that are ongoing, um, however, most of them are experiencing some level of delay just because of all the rain that we've been experiencing, much like other projects. So, um, some of the, some of the phases are being pushed back and ribbon cuttings and things of that or groundbreaking, things of that nature are, are, some of those are, are being pushed back a bit. Um, but, uh, we don't think it's going to be, um, too, too, um, devastating. Um, we are looking at adding Van Meter and Adele to Icon. Um, Van Meter hopefully as early as next month, um, will be, uh, they, they, they have a city council vote to, um, join Icon. Um, and then Adele is looking at it very, um, heavily as well. So we're hoping to expand it and expand the network. And actually the leadership at Icon is, is looking at potentially, um, or the possibility of expanding it statewide. That there's really no reason why it has to be limited when we're talking about recreation and water quality and, and all of that. Um, it has to be limited to just the metro, it can, it, it's something that could work for the entire state. And so they're, they're looking at that, that possibility. Um, best news that I can report here is that, um, we all know that we got a, a fifty thousand dollar grant for the Green Belt Landing artwork from Bravo. That was initially, um, so this is the first year, um, for the Bravo Icon kind of partnership. Um, and that was intended to be a fifty percent match for art. Um, but they didn't get enough applicants for this first year, so they've actually increased it to seventy-five percent. So instead of fifty thousand, we're getting seventy-five thousand for our artwork across the street at Green.
Our representative must be just awesome.
You know, we, we, we've got a nice return on investment there with, with our investment at, uh, Icon. So, I don't know, Richard, did you know about that?
No, neither did I. All right, lots of good news.
It was just announced at the board meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
So we, we were the.
We'll wait that communication.
Yeah, we were the major recipient of that, we by far had the, the most, uh, that was received. There's also, Susan, we, we should look at potential future, uh, Icon Bravo grants with that, the glow trail as well. That's a possibility, so we should possibly look at that, right?
Good point.
Because that's something that they're going to be funding going forward, obviously with your role at Bravo, so something to think about.
Right.
So, that's it.
Eric?
Uh, Good and Good Morning Partnership, I will be, uh, surveying the government policy council again this year. So we'll keep the council, uh, informed along with, uh, uh, Pete as well. Uh, keep the council informed on pending litigation and our efforts to, um, try to get some sanity in the state legislature. That's it.
Good luck there.
Yeah.
Susan?
Well, the only thing I have to report is that the new governance committee that will be working with the homeless solutions organization. Met today, I was unable to participate as I had a conflict, but I am part of that. And it's a newly constituted, newly constituted public and private entity participation. Um, leaders from companies like Hy-Vee and Unity Point, for example, are participating. Uh, Principal and others with the hope and plan that they will be contributing to some of the growing needs to address homeless solutions.
Michael?
I have nothing to add, your honor.
Anything legal, Neil?
No report, your honor.
Matt?
Uh, just two items, your honor, one, uh, appreciate, I know Mayor Edwards and Councilmember McCoy, uh, were able to make it to the back to school bash, uh, last Friday at Crestview. Um, even though it was a little hot, a little toasty, we still had a great turnout and, uh.
Councilman Judd.
Oh, and Councilmember Klein.
Councilwoman Ocker and myself also attended that event.
So I missed that part, so I apologize. Um, so we had a number of council members, so sorry about that, uh, in attendance at the back to school bash. And, uh, just great to see the turnout, um, uh, for the school kids, uh, going into this, uh, this school year. Um, maybe had a lot of great giveaways, including backpacks and other materials as they head into the school year. So, uh, great partnership and collaboration with the school district. And then lastly, just appreciate the council's time, um, we had a lot of meetings this week on strategic planning. And, uh, we'll be following up with next steps as we get the action plans together for you, uh, for your next meeting in September. So that's all I have, your honor, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn our inaugural meeting in our new space?
They're all going to be forty-five minutes going forward, right?
Sure. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing done, we'll adjourn at six forty-six.